So everyone, it's 4:31, but before I call this special session, special meeting, and agenda review to subsequent orders, I want to just share that Senate Bill, Arizona Senate Bill 1013 did pass, and it's heading to the governor's office. So yay to everyone who worked on moving that forward, and this will help us with expenditure limitations, a penalty relief for two years. So, good job, everyone, and I was so delighted to be able to lead off with that announcement. A lot of thank yous need to be done, but for right now, let's just say yay, and thank our teams for moving forward and taking us all the way to the end. So yay again. All right, so with that, I want to announce that we are live captioning our meeting, so please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. So at this time, I'm going to call to order the special session of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of June 13, 2023. For the record, I am going to call roll of members. I'm going to start with our student trustee, Mr. Burnett.
I'm here, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Butler?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Here.
Thank you, Dr. Norene.
Here.
Ms. Smith is ill today, and Dr. Thor? Dr. Thor, I heard you earlier. Are you out there? Ryan, do we know if Ms. Dr. Thor is having some connectivity challenges?
Not, not that I'm aware of. Dr. Thor, if you're speaking, you're still muted. I can try unmuting her from my side. Let me see.
Okay. Linda says she can't unmute for some reason. Well, since she has texted me that she's present, I'm going to call her present with my presence. We have our complement of board members present with the exception of Ms. Smith, and our student trustee is also present. This is a special session regarding our charter high school budgets, and we have for the discretion, Mr. Stacy Boyd, who's principal of Gateway Early College High School, and Mr. Wilbert Nelson, dean of arts and sciences at Phoenix College, currently acting principal of PCPA. Before I introduce them or ask them to speak, Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any comment?
Thank you, President Sullivan. Now, I would just like to introduce the two that are, one's a principal and one is serving as in a leadership capacity while we are working on a permanent solution there at Phoenix College. And so with that, I'll turn it right over to them for their presentation, and we'll get on our way here.
Thank you. I'd like to start then with Principal Stacy Boyd of Gateway Early College High School to present the budget under consideration. Mr. Boyd?
Thank you, thank you. President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of CEC and guests, my name is Stacy Boyd, and I'm the proud principal of Gateway Early College High School. Hey, Ryan, are you able to set up the PowerPoint, or would you like me to present it from my side? Oh, perfect. Thank you. So I'm here to present the FY23-24 budget for Gateway Early College High School. Next slide, please. Thank you, Ryan. So a couple of highlights of Gateway Early College High School. One, they had 74 graduates, which is the largest amount of graduates we've ever had, which is pretty awesome, and we're looking to increase that number for the 23-24 school year. Also, that that number is incorrect, but we've had 19 graduates with AAS and associates in business three. So again, that number is 19. We've increased our scholarships to 3 billion this past year, and again, looking to increase that. It's continued to move forward and continue to increase upward enrollment. Our graduation rate was 100% in addition to our 100% of our college acceptance rate, which we're proud of. For the first time in Gateway College history, we had a recipient of the Dorance Scholarship Award, which is worth $100,000 over four years, which was pretty awesome as well. Next slide, please. So just in a quick comparison for the 23-24 school year in regards to our budget, our four-year summer was 333 students. We increased that to 345 in regards to budget. However, we are currently at 358 students, but there's traditionally some sort of a 3% to 5%. So again, the 345 was a great number to build the budget on. As you can see, our state-based funding per pupil was $4,914, which was an increase from the 2023 school year in addition to the assistance, the additional assistance per student. I'll talk about the $996,000 shortly, but it's a one-time state aid supplement, which was passed by Senate Bill 1720. In addition to that proposition, the 1 per pupil has increased by $50, $50 from last year. Next slide, please. Now getting and diving a little deeper into the budget, based on next year, our state-based funding has increased primarily due to prop through one fundings, student enrollment, also the one-time state aid supplement. Additional assistance has increased by about 100,000 in addition to the estimated proposition 123, pretty much the same. Now again, looking at the one-time state aid supplement, again, that was based on the Senate Bill 1720, there was approximately $300 million that was dispersed amongst all K-12 public and charter schools. Our portion of that was $96,000. Again, that's a one-time state aid supplement. We hope to see it again, but we're definitely going to utilize that money moving forward for additional cost and employees in addition to the increase of the COLA. As we continue down, the state, total state funding is approximately 3.6 million, whereas you see a decrease in federal entitlement, which is 123, I'm sorry, 124 IDA and ESAR. The reason for the decrease is due that we've spent majority of the ESAR funding, which we're supposed to do, and we're beginning to spend the S3 funding as well, which brings our total budget revenue to about 4.5 million, which is about a $400,000 increase. Next slide, please. Thank you. Now, some of the spending for the FY24, again, and looking at the ADM of 333, and increased 345, we're looking to hire additional staff members to offset the increase in student enrollment. In addition to the 20 students in special education, 28 students in ELL, the SB 1720, the weighted student count provides additional cost or additional monies to help supplement costs for those particular students. In addition to the increase in stipends and the COLA increase as well, so we're prepared for that in our budget. In addition to, we leverage the college very well, particularly in offering our students elective courses, particularly in arts, in fine arts, and and so forth. In addition to college tuition increased, the increase, we're prepared for that as well. In books, we're looking to spend approximately $50,000 in books. So our budget is strong, and we look forward to moving forward. We're doing well. We look forward to moving forward in the next year.
Well, thank you very much, Principal Boyd. Are you open to receive any comments or questions from board members?
President Sullivan, yes, I am.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Board members, rather than calling on you individually, does anyone want to offer comment at this time?
The whole screen doesn't look like it normally looks.
And to your point, then, do you, I don't think it's absolutely complete. That is true. Elsa is not with us today, and Ryan is stepping in, so maybe it's a different setup. I'm not sure on that. But Lynn, Dr. Thor, do you have any questions or comments? Is there any other board member that would like to offer comment or question or ask a question? Is it that I can't hear you, or is it because there are no comments or questions?
Well, I'd just like to congratulate them on the $3 million scholarships.
That's pretty awesome, isn't it?
Yeah, that's great. Congratulations.
Thank you. So really, really quick, President Sullivan, a board member, Norene, Mr. Norene or Dr. Norene, I apologize. I had an opportunity to meet you at the college commencement, and I stated that I would have the opportunity to meet you in person. I apologize due to the fact that I thought that this board meeting may be in person, and I would get an opportunity to meet our board members in person, since it has not happened since I've been a principal. So I hope to have the chance to meet everyone in person sometime soon.
Well, you will have an opportunity on the, what is it, 27th, the Tuesday of our regular?
Yeah. I'll be there. And again, thank you for the opportunity to present.
President Sullivan, I just had a quick question. I think I heard this correctly. It's 100% graduation rate and 100% college acceptance rate?
President Sullivan, board member, and I cannot tell, is that board member Burnett?
Yes.
So yes, we have 100% college acceptance rate in addition to the 100% graduation rate to date.
Absolutely fantastic.
Thank you. President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of CEC, are there any other questions? Okay.
Mr. Boyd, no questions for me. I'm wondering if Mrs. Sullivan is experiencing technological difficulty.
Sullivan, are you there? I'll have someone reach out to her.
In the meantime.
Dr. Gonzalez.
Sorry, Dr. Thor.
Oh, you just answered my question, because I've switched over to my phone now, and I wanted to be sure I could still speak. So, thank you.
You're welcome. And now we believe that Mrs. Sullivan may be experiencing some troubles, so I'm asking Dr. Norene to make a decision on whether we wait here or or that he take over and allow Dr. Nelson to present.
Oh, something.
Yeah, I think that'll be Ms. Bittersmith's call as a secretary.
That's right.
It may be, it may be Dr. Gonzalez.
I'm sorry.
No worries. I.
Living in.
Do we have any sense of?
Okay, I just got a text from Marie that says, I'm sure it's a typo, but it says, "I can't endure," with three exclamation marks. I-N-G-U-R-E.
Maybe it's, maybe she was trying to say unmute.
I knew, I knew, maybe.
Oh, I bet, I bet she was having the same problem I was. Yeah, unmute. She asked, can you, can you share that? So, yeah, so she asked, can you share that? So we already have Jordan reaching out, right?
Yeah, I have Richard actually reached out to her right now.
Okay, got it.
So Mrs. Bittersmith, did you decide to wait a few minutes to see if we can get her back on?
Let's, let's give it just a minute, and if not, in understanding time, we can proceed to the next presentation.
She's calling me. Hold on one second.
Okay, good. So she may have texted me, and I can't see it.
My whole screen and everything looks different tonight. So I don't know what's, what's going on.
Dr. Thor, it might be due to the way I'm sharing the presentation versus Elsa usually shares it, so you might notice a little difference on how it's presented.
I see.
Probably due to the way I'm sharing it out.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes, Dr. Thor, she indicated to me through text that she is not able to unmute herself. Spelling it correctly this time. We appreciate everybody's patience as we try to get her back on here and.
Try to, try to decipher text messages.
Again, I don't want to wait too long, but I also don't want to deprive a board member of getting important information.
Richard's on the phone with her now.
While we were waiting, Dr. Gonzalez and the rest of the team, I think it's appropriate for me to echo President Sullivan's congratulations and excitement about the movement on our EL bill to the governor's desk.
I would agree with that, Mrs. Bittersmith.
Do I get to unmute and say woo-hoo? This is Kim. Thank you all very much.
Yes, yes, please do.
I put it in the chat, but I'm not sure everybody saw it. It's a good day.
Ms. Sullivan will be calling in here shortly.
All right, with, with the agreement of the rest of the board, we'll just wait a couple more minutes for President Sullivan to join. Again, because we certainly don't want to miss the information download. Oh, it sounds like it may be more than a few moments. Board members, do we want to proceed with our next item? Jordan, any prognosis on President Sullivan?
I'll get an update right now from Richard.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if she's having the same experience I did, I logged back in, still didn't work, and then I said I proceeded to my phone instead.
He's working on getting her connected right now. So it should only be hopefully another minute or two. I apologize for the wait.
Okay.
Mrs. Bittersmith, she's letting me know that she's trying to connect through phone WebEx at this point.
Okay, I don't want to commit a palace coup here, but I'm wondering if we should just proceed, that we don't delay the rest of the listening audience.
We can probably just proceed, and she'll chime back in as soon as, you know, she can take back over as soon as she chimes back, gets a connection.
Yeah. Well, let's do that then. With the board's permission, let's proceed to the next presentation. Dr. Gonzalez, do you want to set that up?
Yes, we can do that, Mrs. Bittersmith. So we will have Wilbert Nelson review the Phoenix College Preparatory Academy 2023 budget, or the fiscal year 2023 budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready? Can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Wilbert.
Okay, the slide, please. President Sullivan, in view of your technical difficulties, I still acknowledge you, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the board, and members of CEC, good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity. I would like to start my presentation off by saying this. I want to have it on record to commend the teachers and the staff of the PC Prep Academy in spite of the changes in, not only in terms of just trying to secure a principal, but we had several teachers who secured other positions, other places, but at no time was the educational presentations of the students compromised. And so I just wanted on record that they are, they should be commended for the work and the commitment that they kept for the Prep Academy this academic year. Thank you. Okay, in terms of our highlights for 2023, we had 39 graduates this year, which is, again, because of some of the stuff that was going on, but it's only, it only declined about four people, because last year we had 43. We had 11 graduated with AAR and AS degree, we had $1.1 million in scholarships and grants, we had a 96% graduation rate, 100% college acceptance rate. We had one graduate who received an all-state team award for boys scholars in co-ed soccer, along with the player of the year, boys soccer and co-ed soccer. We had one graduate who received an all-league basketball award. Next slide, please. Our base funding, very similar to Mr. Boyd, in terms of Gateway, our state funding went up, as you can see, our additional assistance went up, our Prop 103 dropped a little bit, and our state equalization total also went up. Our Prop 301 went up. Our instructional improvement stayed the same, and with similar, we received for the one-time state supplement aid of $71,707. Our total state funding went up. We also, very similar in terms of our Title I, Title II, Title IV, IDA, ESAR I, II, and III went down, because again, we spending that down in being in compliance with the other requirements from the state and so forth. So our total budget revenue for this year also went up in that aspect. Next slide, please. Our enrollment, let's see, excuse me, a state, state budget, state-based funding is going up, additional assistance is up, our estimated proposition 123 is up for 204. I'm sorry, I think I moved in the wrong place. Gateway got in my way. Sorry, I apologize. Our Prop 1, 123 went down. Our state equalization fund is up, our Prop 301 is up, within 9,000, that stayed the same. Again, it's reflecting the one-time supplement pay of $71,707. And looking at that and examining the budget presentation, we're going to do a combination of using that for math teaches in college tuition. Our total state funding is up. Again, our Title I, Title II, Title IV, IDA, and ESAR I, ESAR II, and III is also down, because we're spending it down. But in general, our total budget and revenue from that perspective. Next slide, please. I think we missed one in terms of showing our enrollment. Okay, if you can go back to the one that shows the enrollment. That one, thank you. Okay, our enrollment for 2023 is 244. We anticipate 250. Same thing, we anticipate in terms of funding will be for 250. Our state-based funding per student is up, additional assistance per student is up, and again, the one-time supplement of $71,707 is reflected, and our Prop 301 per student is also up by $50. Okay, next slide, please, in the elements of the budget. Thank you. So currently, we're 244 students, and we anticipate that number to be up to 250. We have 20 special ed students in terms of special education, 16 English language learners, and all charter school, high school staff will receive the salary increase or stipend based on the FY24 approved salary plan. And our budget includes $185,000 for college tuition and $35,000 for college books. And that's, it's. In addition, while I ask that you acknowledge the commitment that was made and demonstrated by the staff and teachers of PCPA, I also wanted to reflect that we owe a great deal of gratitude, at least I do, in terms of acting principal with the support of Mr. Boyd and his staff in terms of helping me try to navigate the process and make sure that we stayed in compliance with our state as well as our Maricopa requirements. And so I wanted to say that as well.
My pleasure. Ms. Sullivan, are you, can you hear us?
Hey, I think I'm back. Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, wonderful. Okay.
President Sullivan, I'm going to turn the gavel back to you. We had the presentation, but we have not taken questions yet on the Phoenix College Prep proposal budget.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith, and thank you, everyone, for your patience, just a few little glitches at this end, apparently. So there were a couple things. Thank you, Dr. Nelson, for your presentation. I understand, then, we closed out without a vote or motion on, I'll come back then to Gateway, but for right now, governing board members, do you have any comments or questions about the Phoenix College presentation, Phoenix College High School presentation? Any, no questions, no comments?
President Sullivan, I intentionally did not call for the vote. I don't have the script that you have to make sure we do it correctly, so.
No, that's fine. That's all right. I just was curious.
Take the action on item two and item three, unless there are other questions.
Right, okay. I'll come back then to Gateway, but just closing out Phoenix College here, and then I'll go back to Gateway. So I'm not hearing any intention from a board member to make a comment at this time, or do you have a question? Well, being none, then, I would say that it's, thank you, Mr. Nelson, for the presentation, and thank you for filling in as acting principal of the Prep Academy. Grateful for the numbers that you're reflecting and all of the good work that's happening there. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the proposed budget for Phoenix College Prep Academy for fiscal year 2324?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Is there any discussion on the motion? Being none, I'm just going to ask for a vote of ayes. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Being none, the motion to approve the budget passes with all board members in favor. That would be six board members and our student trustee, none opposed. So thank you very much for that. Now, let's go back to the Gateway Early College High School, same thing. And when I was cut off, I was asking a question about the Dorance Scholarship. It's a pretty impressive scholarship. And Principal Boyd, if you're still with us, can you comment on the student who was the recipient of that, and how did the Dorance Scholarship come about? If you're still present to answer that.
Yes, President Sullivan, this is Mr. Boyd. So yes, this student actually applied for the scholarship, and because of his academic success for all four years here at Gateway College High School, he happened to win. And again, it's based on a selection process, which is pretty prestigious in itself, received recommendations from campus leaders in addition to teachers, and was selected. But his academic standings for all four years has been outstanding. But his academic standings for all four years, um, has been outstanding.
Excellent. Well, thank you. That's awesome and congratulation to the student. The other thing again before I was, I lost touch with everyone. I heard you comment that you were looking forward to meeting us as board members. And I wanted to remind you that you have that opportunity at the regularly scheduled board meeting in two weeks, where we will hopefully all be present as we adopt the budget. Tonight, we're approving budgets. Next, uh, board meeting, we will adopt the budget. So, uh, with that, we look forward to meeting you as well.
Thank you, President Sullivan.
You're welcome. Uh, so board members, do you have a motion to approve the proposed budget for Gateway Early College High School for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four?
Still moved?
Thank you. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Uh, so is there any discussion on the motion? Being none, again, I'm going to ask for a vote, uh, of ayes. So all those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none, uh, by vote of, uh, six, uh, zero with also, uh, student trustee voting aye, the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget for Gateway Early College High School has been approved. So congratulations to both high schools. And I want to ask board members, would you speak up if you, uh, are not willing to approve the use of your electronic signature on the approved fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budgets for Gateway Early College High School and Phoenix College Prep Academy? If I don't hear anything from you, I'm presuming that you are okay with that. And I do want to remind everyone that the adoption of these budgets and the opportunity for public comment will take place at the June twenty-seven, twenty-three regular meeting of the governing board. So with that, I'm going to end our special session, uh, as an adjournment. And we are going to move into a special meeting now. And if for some reason you lose me.
It should be over in a minute.
I'm sorry. Uh, if for some reason you move, lose me, then Ms. Bittersmith thankfully will pick up the slack, so thank you. Uh, once again, I need, we'll announce that we are live captioning our meeting, so please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. At this time, I call to order the special meeting with action of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of June thirteen, twenty twenty-three. For the record, again, I will call roll call vote of board members and I will start with our student trustee, Mr. Burnett. Are you present?
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Here.
Thank you, Dr. Nurene.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Smith is, uh, ill. Uh, Dr. Thor?
Here.
Thank you. My president, uh, we have six board members present and our student trustee. And I want to make a comment. Here I am locally, uh, present and I lose contact. And we have a board member who's floating somewhere off in, uh, what, what sea are you in, uh, Dr. Nurene?
I, I'm not sure, but I'm off the coast of Alaska someplace.
There you go, and you're well-connected, so gosh knows. Um, okay. And I wanted to comment also as we move into these items. It is, uh, there is some urgency about bringing these items to the board for action tonight, hence the special meeting, so we will call on each sponsor of the agenda item for clarification regarding these particular items. So the first one is for us to consider approval of amendment number one to the IGA between Maricopa County Community College and Arizona Office of Economic Opportunity for Semiconductor Manufacturing Technician Training Program in the amount of one million, two hundred thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the timeframe of May ten, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-three. I do have a brief paragraph on that, but, uh, Ms. Renfro, perhaps if you're present, you would like to comment? And if not, then I'll read the paragraph. Are you present?
I am present. President Sullivan, members of the board, uh, chancellor, thank you for taking this. Uh, this is a, a, basically a one-point-two-million-dollar grant that the, uh, Office of Economic Opportunities slash Arizona Commerce Authority asked us if we could u- utilize and spend by the end of the fiscal year. So they asked us in May and we quickly got, um, together, uh, a board item. We actually initially did not work sure we needed a board item, uh, because it's amendment to a contract. But given the dollar amount, we decided we needed to inform the board and wanted the board's approval of this gift. We have prepared and are prepared to spend all one-point-two-million dollars on equipment and, uh, materials that support the semiconductor training activity and would also enable us to expand those activities should we have a facility available. So we are confident that that entire amount will be spent by June thirtieth and we're appreciative of the Commerce Authority thinking of us. Um, even though it's the eleventh hour, we certainly, uh, will use the resources.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Renfro. Uh, board members, do you have any comments or questions on this item before I ask for a motion? Pretty impressive and it is, uh, interesting that OEO thought immediately to contact us for use of this additional fund, these additional funds. So, uh, congratulations for standing out as a program that they want to continue to support. Uh, with that, do I have a motion to approve the amendment number one to IGA agreement between the Community College District and Arizona Office of Economic Opportunity, uh, for the Semiconductor Manufacturing Technician Training Program in the amount previously stated in the timeframe of May ten, twenty-three through June thirty, twenty-three? Is there, um, a motion on that?
Still moved.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you. I assume that was Ms. Davis? Is that correct? Was that Ms. Davis? Okay, thank you. Um, is there any additional discussion by board members on the motion? Being none, uh, all, all those in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Are any, any opposed? Therefore, by a vote of six, zero with, uh, including our student trustee, the amendment, uh, passes and congratulations on that. Uh, now I'd like to move to a first read and an adoption of changes to governing board policy four-point-one-three, student board member. Uh, Dr. Thor, would you please give us some clarification on this and why we considered it, uh, urgent matter to take up after a first read?
I would be happy to and thank you very much for placing this, uh, on the agenda tonight. Um, over the course of this last year's, there were some questions about, uh, under what circumstances the stu- student board member receives reimbursement for travel um, and mileage. So the primary revision here brings, uh, the language in line with the travel and mileage reimbursement policies for district employees. Uh, additionally, the existing board policy, uh, calls for the student board member to receive a scholarship of five hundred dollars per semester. However, this last year, the board did, uh, raise tuition, uh, by twelve dollars a credit hour. So it appeared to, uh, be more appropriate to describe the scholarship in terms of the equivalent number of credit hours rather than an actual dollar amount. So the five hundred dollars would be replaced with equivalent to six credit hours of tuition per semester. Uh, the reason, uh, I am requesting that there be only one read of this policy revision and action tonight is so that the, uh, revised scholarship would be in place for the, uh, enrollment in the fall semester. Otherwise, we would not be acting until August, uh, after the semester would have started. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Uh, board members, do you have any questions of Dr. Thor on this matter? Or any comment?
Just want to say thank you to Dr. Thor for, uh, addressing that, looking into it and making that, uh, I think, uh, a re- very reasonable change for the stu- the next student trustee that comes on board. Um, so I just wondered, like, thank you for her attention to detail on that.
You are certainly welcome.
Thank you both. Uh, any other comment, board members? Uh, being none then, do I have a motion to adopt the changes to governing board policy four-point thirteen, student board member as it's been presented?
Still moved.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Nurene. Any discussion on the actual motion? There being none, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, by a vote then of six, zero board members, and I assume our student trustee also voted aye, the changes to governing board policy four-point thirteen, student board member are adopted. So, uh, congratulations. Thank you, Dr. Thor, for your work on that. Uh, so now that concludes the special meeting with action and we will now move into our normally scheduled agenda review component. You've heard me state earlier that, uh, we've been live captioning our meeting and I believe, uh, we may have some substitutes this evening present for Dr. Peterson and Dr. Loschinsky. But, um, so we have Ms. Veronica Hippolito and Dr., or excuse me, and Ms. Stephanie Poliar. So at this time, I'm going to call to order the agenda review meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of June thirteen, twenty twenty-three. Today, we will review the agenda for the June twenty-seven, twenty-three board meeting. Once again, board members, for the record and to make this all official, I'm going to call roll again, reminding everyone it's not mandatory to be at an agenda review. But, uh, let's do this one more time. Mr. Burnett, are you present?
Present.
Thanks. Uh, Ms. Bittersmith?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Here.
Thank you, Dr. Nurene.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith is not with us this evening. Um, Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. Uh, with my presence, we have six board members present and our student trustee. So moving into the agenda for the June twenty-seven meeting, we'll have the normal course of events, um, and we will then move from, uh, the chancellor's report into citizens interim. Depending on how that goes, we will move into our consent agenda. And the first item on our consent agenda will be approval of faculty emeritus distinction for Dr. Mary McGlasson at Chandler Gilbert Community College. Uh, there will also be approval of a faculty emeritus distinction for Mr. Howard Spear, salute Chandler Gilbert. Uh, so with that, is there any comments from anyone on those two items? Uh, on the consent agenda, we will move to adoption of the Gateway Early College High School proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And we will move to adoption of the Phoenix College Prep Academy proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Any comments from board members on those two consent items? After those, we move to approval of acceptance of transfer from the Maricopa County Community College District Foundation of a grant award from the city of Peoria for the Peoria, Peoria AZ Promise Program to Maricopa Community College District on behalf of Lindell Community College in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for the period from March twenty-two, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Any comments on that? The next item would be approval of acceptance of transfer from Maricopa County Community College District Foundation Grant Award from the city of Avondale for the Avondale Edge Estrella Mountain Community College Scholarship Fund to Maricopa Community College District on behalf of Estrella Mountain Community College in the amount of four hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred dollars for the period from February two, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. Is there any comments on that item? Next one is approval of acceptance of new grant award from the US Department of State through the, through Northern Virginia Community College to Maricopa Community College District for Mesa Community College in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars to support participation in the Community College Consortium for the period from July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Is there any comment or question on that item? We now move to approval of acceptance of continuing grant Carl Perkins for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four in the amount of two million, sixty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents from the Arizona Department of Education to supplement the development of career and technical skills of students district-wide. Uh, Ms. Renfro, before I ask board members for any comment, do you have any comments?
Yes, President Sullivan, thank you. Um, members of the board, this item was updated, um, in, in the middle of submission and preparation for this meeting. The original, uh, amount that we were provided by the Department of Ed was somewhere around one-point-one-million dollars, which is what we had, uh, submitted for board approval with a budget that matched that amount. We then got word last week that the award is actually two million dollars, which is great. It's definitely more, uh, closer to what our grant has been in past years. So we have wanted to get the full and updated amount in front of the board, but we have not yet been able to update the budget that goes with it and wanted to, uh, or hopefully, hoping the board will approve it and that we will get the budget from the colleges and how they're going to utilize this Perkins dollars updated and to the board as soon as possible.
Uh, thank you. So with that, so granted, are you saying that you don't expect to have a budget update by the June twenty-seven actual meeting? Or are you saying, um, that this is the amount? And then the budget may in fact come after the June twenty-seven meeting?
I think the budget may in fact come after the June twenty-seventh meeting. Um, President Sullivan, we will try to get it done before the June meeting. The, the item is to accept the, the grant from, from the department. The budget tells the board how the colleges are going to utilize all of those funds. And I know that has been a, a, a topic of interest. So we will do our best to get that budget updated and to the board before the twenty-seventh. I just know that we have people out and it might be more difficult, but we will do our best to get that.
Yeah, fine. And, and thank you for giving us the heads up on the timing and that, that always helps. So when it does come to us, there won't be any surprises, so, um, uh, thank you for that. Board members, do you have any other comments or questions on this? Being none, uh, thank you again, Ms. Renfro. Moving into item ten, approval to authorize entry into an IGA on behalf of Maricopa Community Colleges with the schools of the Arizona Department of Corrections, the Success Academy Lewis, Life Learning Academy, Success Academy Perriville, Success Academy Phoenix for dual enrollment programs through June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Uh, any comments or questions from any board members on that item? Being none, we'll move to approval of renewal of the IGA between the Phoenix Union High School District and Maricopa Community College District on behalf of South Mountain Community College for two embedded advisors for the timeframe of July one, twenty-three, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Is there any comment on that? Item twelve, approval of renewal of current IGA between Mesa Unified School District Number Four and Maricopa Community College District on behalf of Mesa Community College to provide embedded college advisors through June thirty, twenty twenty-eight. Are there any comments or questions on item twelve? Item thirteen, approving, approval of the Helio Campus Assessment Software five-year subscription not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand on behalf of Chandler Gilbert Community College. Any comments or questions? Item fourteen, approval of multi-year purchasing agreements to Johnson Controls West Coast Automation Services and Pueblo Mechanical and Controls to provide energy management system controls and related work across the district. Any comments or questions on item fourteen? Item 15, approval of award and expenditure of budgeted funds not to exceed $1,125,000 over three years. It's about $375,000 per year for a request for proposal 3251-10 Information Technology Help Desk Services to Black Belt Hope for the time period of July 1, 23 to June 30, 26 for a 24/7/365-day help desk service. Any comments or questions on that? Item 16, approval of marketing, social media and Google platform expenses in the amount up to $3 million on direct advertising for district-wide marketing and individual college campaigns during fiscal year 24. Any comments or questions on that? Item 17, approval to award Maricopa Community College District's contract for workers' comp third-party claims to TriStar Claims Management Services for Fiscal Year 2324 in the amount of $67,919 effective September 1, 23 with annual renewal options through August 30, 2028. Any comments or questions? Item 18, approval for lease of classrooms and study spaces at Rio Salado College Community University at Queen Creek to the town of Queen Creek for two years beginning July 1, 2023 with one option to extend the lease term for an additional one-year term at the then-current market rate. Any comments or questions? We do have a placeholder for our meeting on the 27th and that would be potential the approval of state universities license agreements for use of office space at colleges by Arizona's universities for five years beginning July 1, 23 for any particular community college. Can't really, without further identifications, difficult to ask for questions or comments, but just know that that may be on the agenda and you will receive pertinent information prior to that in the budget, in the board book. Then item 20 is approval of the curriculum. There will be deletions, new and modifications. Per course, there are 46 deletions, 11 new and 14 modifications. In occupational programs, there are 14 modifications, 13 deletions. And in academic programs, there are modifications for 33. Are there any comments or questions on item 20? Being none. I also, well, moving on then to the non-consent action items. The first thing we will look to, though I believe this will move to consent. So just in case there are any questions at this time, it's now noted as a non-consent action item. Again, I believe it will move to consent and that is the approval of the designation of Cam Grineo, who's our Vice Chancellor for Business Services, to certify expenditure limit report for fiscal year 2324. Recognizing that this may move to consent, but though it's listed right now as an action item, does anyone have any comments or questions on this?
President Sullivan, I don't have a question, just a comment. I can't see Ms. Grineo, but I'm sure she is, again, delighted to see this move to being a consent item.
I'm sure she's thrilled. I think I saw woo-hoo in writing somewhere.
Yes, I did, on her notes, exactly. And I would echo that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other comments on this? Okay, another item for action will be authorization for Board Policy Committee Chair, and it's currently Dr. Thor, to make technical changes to board policies that fall in the following categories: A, grammatical errors; B, renumbering of policies due to deletion of a policy or relocation of a policy; C, elimination or substitution of language no longer current. Dr. Thor, do you want to offer us any comment before I ask for more comments or not?
Right. So there, I'm referring to primarily the use of the term outcomes. And as the board members know, we have replaced the old board outcomes with the new strategic plan. So therefore, throughout our policies, the reference to outcomes needs to be replaced with priorities or policy.
So this is housekeeping?
It's housekeeping. Yeah. I really hate to have to bring something that only changes one word to two board meetings for a first and a second read.
Got it. So once we, if this goes through as an action item, you will have that authority to make those changes automatically. And certainly, given your work with us, I'm sure every single board member is very appreciative of you taking on that responsibility.
So there's no substantive changes.
Correct.
Simply, simply technical changes.
Got it. So from my perspective, thank you for that and for future chairs to do the same. Are there any comments or questions from other board members? Being none, another item for action will be the second read, an adoption of governing board policy changes to 3.2 accountability of the chancellor and 3.4 monitoring the chancellor's performance. Again, Dr. Thor, do you have any comments on that before I ask for any questions or further comments?
Well, again, the changes on the delegation to the chancellor have been brought about because of the new strategic plan. So that particular policy is a good example of the references to outcomes that now need to be replaced with the term policies. And similarly, under board planning and agenda preparations, general policy housekeeping, it also refers to outcomes as well as the old monitoring reports. It also contains, the old policy contains a paragraph on the evaluation of the chancellor, which really is misplaced since there is a policy that addresses the process that we use for evaluating the chancellor.
Thank you. So that would be on an action item. And then if we note that if you go into first read on the information which follows this, there again will be another comment on governing board policy changes to 3.3 delegation to the chancellor and 4.4 board planning and agenda preparation. So though that's listed as a first read, it's not up for action yet, but will then trip forward into action. Unless you feel, Dr. Thor, that could also be considered under one read, but we haven't really discussed that aloud. So any comments or questions on then H1?
So I mean, there really isn't a time issue with these policies as there was with the student board member policy. So, you know, we can certainly do the two reads on these.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Board members, any other comments or questions on item, that's number three, under non-consent action items or under H, first read, item number one? Okay, being none. Also, it is possible, under either consent or non-consent, we will have an item pursuant to Dr. Gonzalez's contract, though I don't have anything in writing at this point to have included it in today's agenda, just giving people a heads up that that might happen. Also, then, under information, there will be an update on the employment and separations report of April 15, 23 through May 12, 23. And unless someone has any comments or questions, we'll just move on. And that would be also, we'll have a placeholder for a budget analysis on report, a budget and analysis report for Fund One, General Understrated Funds for the 11 months ending 5/31/2023. It's just for a comment, and I'll make this comment also on the June 27 meeting. We tend to go forward and through this information and it sometimes might appear that we as board members are just responding to what's in writing and we're not curious. But if anyone has ever seen a hard copy of the board book, it's many, 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 many pages and each item has supportive documentation that we read prior to both the agenda review and certainly before the governing board regular meeting. So I know sometimes it appears, or it could appear as if, wow, they're just lying through all of these business items and it seems like it, but there's a lot of study going on behind the scenes. So thank you to board members for paying attention to all that. And I just felt that as we're approaching the last board meeting of this fiscal year, I wanted to say that out loud. At the, we will also move, of course, as we always do, through governing board reports and give some summaries. And then we'll remind ourselves of the meetings that we will begin again in August. But just for the record, the June 27, 2023 meeting is the last meeting of the fiscal year, this past fiscal year for us. The board does take a brief break, though, from meetings and that's hiatus, but we will come back together on August 8, 2023 for agenda review. And also, we will have an executive session, another litigation update on August 8. In the meantime, board members, if anything does occur that requires us to convene, you will certainly hear from me or the chancellor on that issue. So does anyone have any comments before I adjourn agenda review? Being none, Dr. Thor, thank you for your attention to all the policies. Thank you, Ms. Renfro, for your updates today. Congratulations, Ms. Grineo, in being able to put an expenditure limitation issue on consent. And we'll look forward to authorizing or adopting the high school budgets. Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any comment before we depart?
President Sullivan, now, thank you for the opportunity. I just want to thank everybody for being here and the good presentations from the high schools and their amazing data. You know, we have our high school students that come through and they have 100% graduation rate, zero dropout rates is fantastic. And then, and there were a few consent agenda items that show the community's investment in Maricopa colleges by providing scholarship funding for students that are, you know, in their communities. And I think that's a testament to the good work that's being done by our faculty and staff and administration across the system when they are deciding to spend, you know, significant amounts of dollars in their community by supporting students who are coming to us. But thank you, President Sullivan. Looking forward to, you know, a couple of weeks here when we have our meeting and then we all get a little bit of reprieve and then we'll be back at it again in August.
Yep. Thank you. Any other comments, anyone? Being none then, have a good evening. Apologize for the earlier technical glitches, but they got straightened out. So with that, good night and see you on the 27th in person. Thank you, everyone. Good night.